No, okay.
Cal. But they can't get much than they get some.
That's great.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. To start, let's please rise for the flag. High flag deleted. Flag. United States of America. In the Republic which stands under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. This is a study session. I'd like to move to adopt an agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt an agenda? Christina first, Augusta second. All in favor? All motion passes. And as I said, this is a study session and we will move over to superintendent's comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. I'll just take off my mask since we are appropriately socially distanced here at the board meeting. I want to discuss a couple of topics briefly, but important topics. I'm going to go backwards a little bit here. We'll start from the top and then kind of go back to the financial one. So, so one of the things that that we're faced with and everyone knows is the planning for the reopening of schools. And I think it's important particularly at this time, okay? I think particularly important this time for, for us to, to kind of recalibrate to some degree. You may have read even today, an article that was in the Times Union, at least the online version of T U. And I'm sure that tomorrow we'll get an article in the Gazette and we'll probably get some news media call and, and asking about a letter to the quote unquote "community" certain heads of different teacher associations. And, and while I appreciate, while I appreciate the fact that people are using their voices to, to express concerns that they have related to school opening, it's important though for people not to misconstrue people's even individual perspectives with realities of what we've been doing to plan for a safe and effective reopen. I think it's an important point that the community needs to know. And as it turned out, we had on this agenda a school reopening piece, so it was, it was opportune to, to talk about that. And so I, I use three terms here, prevention, mitigation, reinforcement, to contextualize what we're trying to do as a part of our reopening piece of it. And when you hear those terms, you almost kind of think like this is almost like a school safety conversation that we've had in the past about active shooting and all those things that we, we were doing to, to ensure that our schools were safe from some of those kind of things. In many ways, it's still very much that. How do we look at the COVID-19 pandemic? And, and what are the things that we're putting in place to, as from a prevention perspective? What are the things that we put in place from a mitigation perspective? And the reinforcement is, what lessons do we learn from all those things and try to do it better moving forward? Recognizing that we have to keep moving forward. So it's not a blind, hey, let's just open schools and don't do those things. It's a very deliberate, we need to provide a quality educational experience for our students. Subsequent to what's the best way, the most effective way to do so. Two different conversation points, and I think that piece is important. Just to provide a quick little context on this piece of it, because again, you know, we, we have had a lot of conversation around school openings. We've had many, many, many virtual meetings. Board members attended many of them. I think last conference, we were up to about a dozen of those. We have a comprehensive frequent ask question document on the, on the website. So a lot of information is out there to the public, forward-facing information. And yet we're still planning to have more meetings into the coming weeks and, and things message going out, be it message from myself or message from Dr. Wood. Better principles are doing the same thing now with virtual drop-in sessions and departments are doing the same thing, be it academic departments or operational departments. So, so a lot of people are engaged in, in that conversation. And so it's important then that for us to kind of think about the journey, the path, so to speak, that, that we have been on over the last, quite frankly, three, four months or so more so than not. Because the first two months, March, March, April was pivoting. We were all just pivoting the system very quickly. And after we pivoted the system, we got through the school year, then we started saying, okay, let's kind of get in this recalibration mode. We say, okay, how do we play this forward and what else do we need to change in order for us to effectively provide education for the fall? And so, so, so we went through a lot of concept development, a lot of thoughts, a lot of ideas. Everybody had thoughts, ideas about doing how we do everything from, from, from transportation to technology. We have, and get inundated with every vendor who has the newest product out there selling the concept. Hey, try this, try this, try this. So a lot of concept development. And it's great, but concept development is just that. And then we were waiting for the guidelines and the guardrails from the state. So that's when we started doing the technical plan development, which the board saw our technical plan. And that technical plan was everything, again, what are the guidelines that we have to have? What are the mandates? And then what are the guardrails? The guardrails are saying basically, you know, we're not going to tell you exactly what to do, but you got to stay within these lanes, so to speak. And so, so looking at those kind of things, what are the contractual stipulations that we have to make sure that we are aware of, abide and buy and those kind of things? And so what are the fiscal constraints? We went through the budget process. And we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight as well, you know, as we develop the budget. We developed the budget as we're thinking about going into a COVID-19 situation for the coming year. What are the implications surrounding those, cost of P P Es and things of that nature? What are the physical constraints that we have in terms of space and capacity and all? So those are the technical things that, that we had to first sift through all those things before we start going into the execution phase or the execution planning piece, which is now, it's kind of like where we are right now. We're in that due diligence piece, okay? We have great plans, so now let's start saying, if we do this, then what? If we do this, then what? If we do this, and we're doing all that, by the way, before we actually do it. Because we, we trying to, to as much as possible anticipate the impact or the outcome of things before we execute it. Because try to minimize the risk of having a negative outcome and enhance the risk of having a positive outcome. So that's the reason why we're doing those kind of things. So, so, so the due diligence and what I call the live nuances. There's certain things that you just got to live and experience it and go through it before we do it. So, so a perfect example of, even here at the board meeting, I, I sent a note to, to Barb Seliger when we decided to come back in person. Hey Barb, let's do social distancing and set up in a, in a library. We changed this three or four times before we got to a place where we're thinking, okay, now it's comfortable enough. And even tonight, we got a mirror image of it. And so we evolve and modify that as well to say, this is for this, this is for that. So, so the lived experiences, those nuances has to occur. And we all have to recognize that, that, that we're changing things, modifying things as we experience them so we can make it better as we move forward. Some point down the road, we get into the, what I call the productivity evaluation phase. How good is it really going? Is it really good as we thought? You know, we getting the results that we thought we were going to get? So we need to evaluate those kind of things because oftentimes people put plans together and they start living it, but no one ever came back and say, is it working? How well is it working? So we need to be in that productivity evaluation phase so we can start recalibrating again. Because we're not building a plan for a moment or for a period of time. We've built a plan that fundamentally talks about how will education as a system change? Because there's so many things that as a result of the pandemic has forced us to reexamine so many things that we say, you know what, we probably should be doing this differently. We probably should be doing this better or different ways. And so the productivity evaluation phase becomes, and all that's going to happen before we get to a point where we say, we're standardizing and institutionalizing things, what people want to call the new norm. We're far from that new norm where things are institutionalized when we say, as a system, this is how we do what we do. People are holding on to what we did, but the realities have changed what we did and so we have to do things differently. So subsequently, we have to change some things. And so, so we're talking about how do we embrace those practices as, as we move forward? So, 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 so a big part of that then comes down to some of the things I said, that the critical communication. Communication's been key and continue to be key in terms of how we push information out there, be it on the web. How do we make sure information is forward-facing? Because that not only articulates to people what we're doing, but also articulate expectations for outcomes. So when we say we're doing this, we also, also articulate, and this what we expect the outcome to be. So that information, just more than awareness, is also an articulation of, of expected outcomes. So a lot of those things we putting out there forward-facing. Looking at added preventive methods. And so this is one of those areas that we constantly looking at. You know, we talking about, we've been talking about sanitizers, P P Es, all these things. And every day is a new dimension. And one I just want to highlight just recently, yesterday actually, the state came out with a, a new guardrail to say that school district, this ain't school district must, but school districts can put hand sanitizers, hand sanitizers on buses. Huge. Prior to this, it wasn't even an allowance. So it's a huge piece because when you think about a very simple thing now, and so when you think about, you know, the, the, and don't take my word, but take from experts, the biggest, um, um, one of the biggest things to, to prevent the spread of COVID has been this. People wearing a mask. And that's the reason why masks is, is a big part of it. That's why New York numbers went down in most states who were peaking and now starting to see the decline because people much more preventive. And hygiene. And so, so most people walk around with a bottle of hand sanitizer in their car, in their pockets, or it's everywhere you walk into this, this space, this hand sanitizer. So if you keep your germs to yourself and you have clean hands, that minimize the fact that now my hands are relatively clean. Well, I just took my mask off, so now I would have to wipe that down. That's why we have the, the wipes right there to wipe down microphones and things of that nature. But if we can minimize those kind of things, so when kids come on buses, then they're wearing a mask, for example, and we can just quick skirt, minimize what kids' hands are now at least relatively cleaner than prior. That's another preventative method. And I share all that with you because none of these things are foolproof without people executing them themselves. That becomes habit of minds. And so our job is to try to put all these things in place and then communicate them out. So, so right now, for us, for example, to put all these hand sanitizers on buses, it's probably going to cost us six to eight thousand bucks. None of this stuff is cheap, by the way. That's just to put the dispensers. We're not talking about, we're not talking about to have the chemicals, the, the stuff in them all the time. So, so I share that though, but it's an investment to ensure that we are trying to provide a safe environment in a, in a true sense and also in a psychological sense. Because people need to be psychologically comfortable in environments. And so we talking about those kind of things. Just an example of preventive methods that we're trying to do to enhance safety. We're working on, on the human resource capacity. A lot of conversations surrounding the best way to use staff, who's C V L, who's in person. All those conversations are happening and guess what? Dr. Wood and I just went through some plans this morning. She went through Jill. And we going to execute. And as soon as we start executing, we're going to say, oops, we need to move this to this, we need to move this to this. And so people need to recognize that flexibility becomes par for the course. Because we would never, ever put someone in a situation that, that we set them up for failure. We're going to set people up for success and support their success. Which kind of goes to the next piece of it, that, that a ton of professional development. And, and we mentioned before that we want to use the first four days, September 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, if I'm doing math right, for P D related things and having kids come in on the 14th, the following Monday. That's a big part of our professional development piece. Having ongoing professional development. We looking right now at a secondary model and saying, how do we potentially carve out even some P D time continuously in the secondary model to, to, to focus on the hybrid piece and, and some of those kind of things? And those details are still kind of being worked through as we speak. But the point I'm making is that, that we're trying to anticipate all the potential needs, all the potential pinch points and having plans and our contingencies in place to deal with those things as they evolve, as we go through the process. So that's a big piece of it as, as we move forward. Building readiness and we're going to have Augie and, and our Kathy talk about it for a second. We spent, was it yesterday or yesterday morning, we met and, and walked through the high school. Reason why we started high school, because we have a ton of construction happening in high school. And yes, I, I, I respect Augie and his team and I respect Kathy and her, and her team. But the bottom line is, I need to see it myself in order for me to say, yeah, we're at a point now where we can be ready because I can't just make an assumption and then two days later find out, oh my God, that's not a possibility. I mean banking on, on certain things. So building readiness becomes a big part of it. So we're looking at construction, we're looking at social distancing. There's big conversation about, you know, what does social distancing mean? Is it from the edge of the desk, whatever? And that clarification that came out that what we've been doing all along in terms of Barbara and her custodian staff setting up desks in classrooms was consistent with the, the D O H guidelines. And now State Education Department is supposed to realign some of their documents to have one consistent message. That's the worst thing, we have inconsistent messages going out because people, people take the message that's most beneficial to them, right? And not necessarily one that's most beneficial to, to the organization. So, so we're looking at some of those kind of things as, as we move forward. Video technology. We, we, we still right now, I mean, everyone is looking for video technology. So trying to get more stuff to come in is, is hard. There's a big article today about Chromebook shipments that are being sitting on ports because of, of, of federal immigration fights with other countries. And, and it's crazy that you have tons and tons and tons of equipment that's sitting on ships that would never, can't be distributed because of other issues, but not going to get caught in that conversation right now. But we're in the process now of looking at, at different ways of trying to bring in more technology, help with live stream capacity and those kind of things. So we can provide more flexibility to provide education for kids internally and externally and otherwise. So those are some of the big things we're looking at. Fiscal realities, we're going to talk about, modification district calendar. We will, barring if the board, I don't anticipate the board having objections since we have had this conversation a few times. We're going to modify what I call the, it's usually colorful, but I, I was cheap and printed black and white. The district calendar, this is the one that the board approved to reflect the 14th being the first day for students and the fact that we're using four superintendent's conference days up front, which means our March superintendent's conference day has become the instructional day. And unless the state provides some other waivers, that's how the mod is going to unfold at this point. So we try to upload a lot of P D in the front of the process and those kind of things. And a lot of people waiting for the official version to come out, to plan for it. So, so we want to try to get that out as, as soon as possible as well. The fiscal realities is something that, that right now is, we do as Lumen, where we develop the budget. Mr. Delato brought us several points about what contingency we have. We have contingency in place. That's a fiscal reality. We're going to talk about it a little bit when Mrs. Chase talks about our year end. The 20% reduction piece that's out there. And, and so, so that's, that's a real concern. If that happens, it impacts, forget about, you know, do we bring kids on this day or that day? It impacts the provision of education, period. And, and I say that because sometimes people want to use that as, because of this, we should start two weeks later. It doesn't matter, the problem I have today, if that happens, I'm going to have that problem two months later. I'm going to have that problem two years later. And so, so therefore, we just need to figure out, how do we recalibrate and, and try to do the best we can today? And, and move forward. And I say that very respectfully because I think that when people hope that tomorrow's going to be better, I don't know what tomorrow brings. I know the situation we're dealing with right now. And I know what I do right now can help or hurt what I, my situation tomorrow. So our focus is on those kind of things. And so we can talk about the fiscal realities as, as we move forward. And, and a big piece, and another big news that's came out yesterday too, was the provision of athletics. And, and depends on where you see that. You know, so if I'm a student athlete, yay! As superintendent, I'm thinking, this is going to be interesting. And, and you're speaking from a guy who, who, who is and was a big has been athlete. And, and, but I see that and thinking, okay, how and do, how do we do that? What are the other implications of doing that? And Mr. Cole and I, A D, in fact, we're meeting again tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. Going to try to work out some plans, not only how we do sports, but how does that impact everything else that we do in school and otherwise? And so, so sometimes people see this, the initial surface thing and not think about, how do we actually execute it? So, so back to that sequence, concept, technical plan, execution. And so we're going to be trying to do all that in a short period of time to try to come up with something that we can effectively do. So that's, so, so, so you get the, the potential huge Lumen or state aid on one side of the, the spectrum. You have a lot of people excited about sports and also petrified at the same time on the other side of the spectrum. And, and, and every parent, and Mrs. Stevens and I, we have this conversation all the time, that, you know, every parent thinks their kid is going to be the next great whatever. And, you know, I thought my kid was going to be the next great whatever too. We all, that's what we do as parents, right? But the reality of it is only exceptional few that actually becomes that. And that's why it's great, because if everybody was doing it, it's just commonplace. And, and so I end with this very positive note before I'm going to ask Kathy to talk about some, some, just a quick bit on construction. Tonight, as some of you know, we have one of our former greats here that's going to have his big time debut tonight against the Yankees. Nothing against Mrs. Bush and the Yankees, but I do hope that the Braves win tonight. Ian Anderson, as, as an example. And, and I share that, I put that in, I share that particular example, not, you know, Ian is a great kid and, and I'm proud of what he's doing and, and leadership model success. However, I'm using it for context. For context, for people to know that the same North Star that we use that led, that led to the success of past graduates is the same North Star that we have to use today that led to the success of kids sitting here now. I'm looking at Grace, who's a, a, a upcoming junior, correct Grace? That, that, that I'm, the same North Star, I'm sitting here thinking, how do we ensure that this young lady's experience is going to be a quality experience? And we don't succumb to our own personal biases or preferences or even fears? And have those things get in the way of the practicality of trying to ensure we can do things effectively and safely. And, and so that's the challenge that we have. And, and so that's the community challenge, that's our internal challenge. And that's why we have these plans to try to address all those things because we know that people enter the conversation from different vantage points with different feelings, different emotions, different expectations. However, we have one singular North Star. And that's to try to provide the best quality education for kids internally or externally, meaning remotely or otherwise. And, and so, so, so sometimes that rubs people the wrong way because they think we're not cognizant of those things. Very cognizant of those things. And it's because, because of those things, we're taking all these extra steps because of those things. So when people come back to the space, the first day anxiety is going to be less second day, less third day. And quite frankly, by the end of the week, we're at a place that, okay, now I can better contribute and add more value to the situation, not only for the adults, but for the students. And I'm going to share this last thing as Kathy come forward. One of our former principals shared an email with me today. And I happen to know this parent who moved away, the parent that actually lived in Florida. And, and they started school, some schools in Florida started, some still kind of up in the air. And the parent wrote a note back about her first grade kid. The parent asked, one of our former administrators specifically, share with me about her first, first grade kid and wearing a mask. They have a first grade kid and two kids in middle school. And, and a lot of anxieties, parents had, oh my God, my kid can't wear the mask. And kids are resilient if we set the right expectations for them. Resilient if we set the right expectations for them. And so I, I share that last comment that, that we can have the best plans in the world, but we need to have people with the right mindset coming to the table, asking the question, what can I do personally and individually to add value, to make this situation workable? So the great superiors of the world who attend our schools, we can, not only say we have their best interest in mind, but we act in their best education interest in mind. And that's not to sacrifice safety. Because that's the last thing any of us ever want to do, to sacrifice anyone's safety. And that's why we taking all these steps to do those things right. So I, I, I want to share that perspective with the board because as we get closer and as we get engaged in this execution phase, it's not real until it's real. And when it start becoming real, that's when you start people like, oh my God, this is going to happen. And then the question you have to ask yourself is, what else do I need? And, and to be uncomfortable, it's okay. We're all uncomfortable in this environment, in all aspects of our lives, period. But we normalize, we execute the best practices and we keep moving forward with the best interests of our students in mind. So with that being said, one of the things that, that, before, any, any questions, comments from the board related to that?
And how are we thinking with that? I, I think people really need to hear that it is our priority, the safety of our children is our priority. And hearing that, restating that, and also send them worthy examples. So if we want children to wear masks, we wear masks. And doing that, I think is very important. Restating that for our public and for the board, I think is very important. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Robinson, where are we sitting percentage-wise? I know we had talked about a lot of the other districts, about an 820 split. Are we about the same?
Yeah, for the, for the question related to remote students who are taking C V L completely, virtual learning option, it's about 18, 19% roughly, which we sort of anticipated and it became the reality. So now, so the question is, is where do those kids fall out, right? What grade level, what needs? And, and so that becomes the tricky part. We know the total, but now we got to break it all apart and, and align it becomes, and that's, that's where the, the finesse work comes into play. And that's where a lot of folks, working director of Dr. Wood, is trying to make sure we finesse those things to make it actually work.
And just for clarification, do you know the percentage that actually withdrew from the school, that went home school option?
That numbers, I don't know, but I can say that number hasn't necessarily been, in fact, we actually seeing the opposite because what happened now, you see people like, oh, I could, instead of me going online and getting online curriculum for home school. Yeah, and also we, and also, yes. And also we're seeing private school kids. We're seeing some of that, but not the home school numbers so much. And you got to remember, a lot of people who homeschool, homeschool because they have some fundamental, personal, family reasons for doing so. So it's not just a, I'm not going to say indecision arbitrary, but it's, it's, it's something that they have always fundamentally lived and believed in a certain way and, and that's how they've raised their kids. And so, you know, we respect that, we try to support it as much as we can. Just, so just a quick little update on board, because I think it's important for the board, related to construction stuff. And, and we just did a quick little walkthrough the other day. And I asked Kathy just to put some, some highlights and just talk through it real quick. And I'll touch the mic so you don't have to.
Thank you, thank you. I'm taking my mask off because I know I don't talk that loud. A lot, a lot of construction and work was done since we've had the closure in March. We'll start with last year's construction projects and where some of the last year's projects are. The high school East library is complete. I think those punch list items are done as well as high school East cafeteria. There are a couple of outstanding items with high school West roof with punch list and skinned patio cafeteria floors. They're still trying to rig the ship there. We had a couple of issues there. Transportation bus lifts are now complete. That took the better part of this past year.
Can you explain a little more, what those are? Can you explain a little more to bus lifts?
The bus lifts are the lifts that lift the buses so that they can work underneath them. And they involve lifts that are actually in the cement concrete floor. So it's quite a process to dig out the old ones and install the new ones. Very impressive though, if you ever get a chance to go see them. Arundin roof, snow slides, you know, kind of an accident waiting to happen. So we were glad to get those complete. The district-wide signage, if anybody's driven around campus lately, you're seeing that the consistent signage with the Shen logo and colors are consistent throughout the district. We also put consistent lettering on the buildings now so that the buildings themselves are identifiable in the entrance areas where you're actually entering the buildings. High school, I'm sorry, we also added some new speed bumps. You'll notice they're a little bit of a different kind than what they used to be. The snow plows didn't really like the old ones. So we renovated those. High school East parking lot, you'll notice there's new lights, probably not that noticeable, but they are all replaced. Tech Wing project, lots of work going on there. It's, it's going to be shut off completely when school opens. But the rooms upstairs in the science area are being renovated and completed, as are the art rooms. They'll be ready for opening. The only thing that we were told by the vendor we won't have is cabinetry. Keeping our fingers crossed, is going to be delivered mid-September as they told us. Ventilation has been worked on and that's going to be ready for school opening as well. And the tech rooms, as I mentioned, will be kind of sectioned off. Nobody will be able to come in or go out of those. And they will be turned over after the December break. The Smart Schools project, there's a lot of fiber being run throughout the buildings for the purpose of the new phone system and P A system. Ken's been working diligently on that a lot this summer among everything else. We are changing the phone system to internet. We are changing the phone system to internet-based system, which will have a lot of capabilities, we are told. We're also integrating the phone systems into the security blue light systems, the door closures, pin pads, and fire alarm panels. And this plan also provides for a disaster recovery plan, which I know has been in the works for the last couple of years. Internal projects, this list is unending, and kudos to Barb Saliker, to Augie Freeman, to Steve West. I know he's on a leave of absence, but he was responsible for getting a lot of these things done as well. You'll notice at high school east, there's now a secure vestibule situation set up there. Things like the sidewalk that was done before graduation, you'll see lots of painting, you'll see lots of floor renovation, tree removals, hot water heaters, sanitizing, upgraded security cameras with milestone, airflow handling systems throughout all the buildings, just tons and tons of work. I just can't even say enough about it. They've just done a tremendous amount of work, very visible in every building at this point. They really took advantage of the fact that the buildings were not occupied and were able to really take on some of those bigger projects that they would not normally be able to do, so.
Before the board, just want to emphasize one bigger point because, again, it's a point that the people make about ventilation. And I think I made a point before that we were always doing more than normally required anyway as a system, and now we've doubled up on that. And so there's the distinction between the filter to get its MIRF 13, that's people putting out there, right? That the MIRF 13 is in our air handlers and then one is in our units. And so those things are, so we're doing both. And so in other words, there are many, many unrated filters. So to have rated filters, it's like the next elevation, just kind of keep perspective, right? So it's going by no name brand versus the higher quality. And so right now, all our systems are the highest capable that the systems can manage, and the combination of the two different things is to, in fact, maximize the airflow. And even just talking to Augie Freeman the other day, that we're going to even exaggerate that particularly during the first part of the year, here while the weather's still warm, to put a flow. So ironically, you're going to get people to start complaining that buildings might be too cold, because part of that is addressing the airflow issues as well. And so I share that with you because of the whole piece of the same work, that we're trying to do all we possibly can to create the safest environment that we can. Those are the technical pieces. Then the behavioral pieces kicks in, and that's the piece that people have to hold themselves accountable for. And parents have to hold their kids accountable and model for. But I just want to highlight that piece of, because it's a huge, huge undertaking by this, the school district to do that piece of, huge financial undertaking in other ways, huge undertaking.
So I think it's smart to take advantage of the timeline, the building's being empty and moving forward. When you were talking about the tech wings, you said they're going to be turned over in December. Does that mean they're going to be, the work's going to be done?
Hopefully.
Oh, so that by January, those rooms will open up. Is the same with science?
Science, science will be largely, science will be used, start of school. They won't be finished with cabinets around the frames. But the floors will be done, ceiling will be done, all of the stuff will be done, lights, all of those things that we're doing in those spaces.
And that's ahead of schedule, isn't it?
Well, so we've been pretty aggressive, we, Augie and his team have been pretty aggressive with the company, ships and parts. You know, basically saying, we need to have this done right now, and then we can swing back to that piece of. And kudos to folks, they understand the necessity of what we need to do.
In New York City, one of the recommendations is the airflow is still going to leave windows open, and people were saying, well, it's pretty cold up here, and it's not a viable alternative for boosting airflow in winter time. We don't have to rely on open windows.
No, no, because, again, because of the system between the, that's why I point out those two different type systems that we have within space and then overall within the building itself. And it's one of those things, again, I'm a little bit outside of my element, but I can tell you, we have had engineers engaged in this process for a while, looking at our entire systems and looking where we have pinch points, and we know that there's some spaces that weren't necessarily initially constructed for that. And so how do we even minimize who is in that space that comes? And then what are the additional equipment we can do to compensate for buildings airflow differences, or quite frankly, do not have people occupied? I'm talking about mitigating the small, what I call credible kind of spaces that maybe we use for different things over the years. So, yeah.
We're basically relying on a mechanical filter essentially, taking particles out of the air or whatever. Apparently, there's ultraviolet light sanitation as another method of treating, whether it's supplemental or substitution or whatever. Go ahead. Did we look at that at all?
We did, and there are certain things that are not allowable in this state. So we did, we looked at those, and so the answer is, yes, we did. However, there's certain things not allowable. But your question, though, Mr. Delaro, brings, and I'm going to share with the board, I think I can just put out a report, the CSCA organization, that's where I got it from, that talks about, you know, people want to talk about, see filtration as the golden answer to it. But the reality of it is, it's not, it's these other things that we're doing. So it's about making sure that people don't come to work sick and season and coughing all over the place, it's spread the germs that you're trying to get out. So if we can minimize the germs that's in places, that's less germs you have to have to get out of places. And so logically, it makes sense, and so I say that, so we're trying to do the combination of all of those things, right? And so the prevention piece becomes a big part of it first, and then the mitigation piece and other pieces of it to make sure that we have those situations in place. And so I think part of it is that there's a lot of folks that may, or should I say, share opinions that don't even understand the science behind even filtration or even the science that people run about, the spread of particles and what does that mean and all those kind of things. And so we spend a lot of time to connect those things because we want to make sure that we're just not going by what we think, and I want a narrow scope of thoughts versus what are the research, science journals putting out right now saying about certain things, how does that come into play all the time as well? So even alcohol-based, certain percentage of alcohol-based enhancing sanitizers, we're at that point where you solve one problem because of another problem. You know, so those are the kind of things that become important. So, yes, we're doing all those things, but do one of those things solve the problem? It's the combination of all those things to help mitigate the situation. So, thank you. Kathy, stay here.
Sure.
So a couple of the cook updates to the board and jump into the goals is that we can turn this, Kathy, should we do a report?
Report. Well, the summary is the figures, so it depends on which one you want to look at.
So the fiscal reality is a big part, and this is not hard to see the board members have it, we can look at it closer. How easy is to talk through this?
Okay.
And then we can look at the details of this. Because that's a lot of, yeah, so just talk through this, Kathy.
So, again, in March, we kind of took a step back and froze expenditures as much as we could, and obviously expended on those things that were necessary at that point. So we saved some money on one hand, we spent more money on the other hand, but in the end, we managed to expand just over 96% of our budget in anticipation that this next year was going to be very difficult. We, you know, had some savings in instructional salaries like we typically do because of retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. Interesting, one of the good things that I guess happened, we had some savings in the substitute area because we didn't necessarily need as much in the way of substitutes, so we had about $384,000 saved in substitute costs. Moving on, in administrative, we had two retirements and two resignations, provided a little bit of savings there. Non-instructional, similarly, we had retirements, resignations, leaves of absence. We did still keep our transportation operations running in the bus garage, I should say, in maintaining our vehicles. So we did still incur some overtime there because we did still have maintenance schedules to maintain, and we didn't really know when we were coming back to school either. So it was important that we continued to keep those on step and keep them moving.
Kathy, can you clarify the term adjusted budget?
Yes. So the adjusted budget is, as you look at this chart, is the adjusted budget is after we do budget transfers and carryover encumbrances. So while any line item, we might adjust and transfer money to cover a shortfall in those line items, the adjusted budget is not the same as our adopted budget. So our adopted budget is what we originally thought we were going to spend. And in most cases, I, in my narrative, I was talking about comparing to adjusted budget, but in some cases, it was important to point out what the adopted budget was. For example, you'll see under benefits as we move to that, unemployment was way over-expended. Our adjusted budget, it didn't look like it was over-expended, but, you know, we were way over-expended by a couple hundred thousand dollars. You know, we probably will be this next year as well, but it was just important to point some of those things out. So you may see some differences within some of the narratives.
So just to make sure, the adjustments occur in maybe circa one or two ways. One, in commerce, in other words, things that need money to carry from one year to the next year to cover some expense anticipated already planned for. In other words, some instances, we order a bunch of stuff, and it's going to come due in the next fiscal year, that money's transferred to cover that. Second piece of it is, in a budget line, we may anticipate certain things that we make transfers from one to cover in the area that we see, that we know that this area's going to be because the circumstance is higher than anticipated, and this is going to be lower than anticipated, so we're making those adjustments. So the net impact of the budget is the same, but on a particular line, it may, in fact, be different. And so we look at some of those kind of things and make those adjustments as well, so we have flexibility to cover whatever the emerging cost might be at that point.
Can I ask you a question? For the adjusted budget, so we have the budget reappropriation column in the near the adjusted budget. At what point did we, because obviously, we did the adopted budget in May
Yep.
of the prior year. At what point did we, was the adjusted budget presented? Is this just now?
No, that's ongoing operations.
Just ongoing, okay.
On a monthly basis.
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the budget appropriation, $301,000 under contractual? How is that different?
That was the tax reserve that we re-appropriated, I believe, in June or July.
Under contractual, other, that one?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, very good.
Okay.
So, great point, great question. So the board gets the treasurer's report, and the treasurer's report speaks to the adjustments, kind of like the status of where we are in the budget. So for the board, for me personally, even as superintendent, I look at it as like a dashboard. Where are we in alignment to this time last year? And are we on target and, that's great, if we're not, why not? If we're below, why? So it's meant to the why questions, right? And then we dig deeper, figure that piece out. And so for the board on a monthly basis, you get those, and that's why we make those adjustments to make sure that, one, we're not over-expending a particular account code because legally, technically, we can't, we shouldn't. And, two, if we're transferring from someplace else, it's an appropriate transfer. And, three, it's, we're not paying, robbing Peter to pay Paul. At some point down the road, we have a negative in a hole that we can't fill. So all of that has to be taken into consideration, and that's why it's done on a monthly basis. That's why the board gets the monthly treasurer's report, because the treasurer is the person that, that's technically the person that's reporting directly to the board, that capture all of these things that comes into place. And so this is another back, so the board appreciate it. So transfers, there's a multi-phase approval of transfers. It goes through Kathy's staff first, and Kathy sees it and orders back to Paul, then it comes to me, to what we call the level three ones. So after they go through all the level three ones, that's kind of me, then I have to say, yeah, yeah, on the system before the transfers have to take place. So these things have a protocol to make sure that we're not all over the place, and, two, that there's due diligence being exercised by many people through the process. And so that's why we have that sense of assurance then, that we always, so we look at the treasurer's report, I can say, yeah, I know we're on track because we have the only due diligence process in place to make sure people are asking about those kind of things. Because I can't make a transfer unless there's sufficient balance in that code for that transfer to occur.
And I was going to also mention, no one can do a purchase order if there's not enough money in that line item either. So the budget transfer has to be done in advance of to ensure that there's enough money to pay for whatever it is we're ordering.
And actually, that's why I was asking about the timing, is because, you know, when we have the treasurer's report, it typically lags thirty days, so they couldn't cross records numbers.
Yeah.
But this is a great snapshot of that, so thank you.
Sure. Okay. I think we went to benefits, we were just headed down to benefits. We had a pretty large savings in health insurance again this year. We budgeted 4% to 9% rate increases. We ended up on average with about 2.02%. CDPHP, which is our main plan, came in about 3% to 4%, which was significant, but also our, once again, our prescription rates had no rate increase, and we also received this year about 1.8 million in rebates. So our consortium participation with BOSI's has really paid off for us and provided us a significant amount of savings for our health insurance line.
And that's the problem is, this one is a very tricky one for us, because we could have one or two high-priced jars that comes from someone used to watch out all their savings just like that. In fact, we have one right now that we're watching very closely, and I say that because people need medication they need for their health. So it's not about that question, but we have to anticipate that if that happens, how do we, again, recalibrate and plan forward? And so sometimes people see this and thinking, that was poor estimation. There are factors out there that we can anticipate as much as we can. As I said, we know of a potential situation right now that we have to monitor to see, when would that materialize and would it materialize, and what's the cost implication for us, because we self-fund our drug piece. And so we have to really, really monitor that piece of it as we move forward. So it's kind of like, you know, it's the, you get the benefits, when you get benefits are good, but you also hold the risk. If the risk is also, so therefore, how to minimize risk is to try to anticipate and plan for. So I think this is an important point for the board to know, the inside baseball, so to speak, not to have an Ian Anderson reference on how the finances work playoffs.
Yes, Gary.
Their indication of boarding resignations and the number of instructional staff?
Yeah.
Is that a high number as compared to most years?
No, I think that's about average for a year, yep.
I think, yeah, we have also a lot of people part-time, too.
Yes.
Some people go find other jobs, full-time jobs, and people go back and forth with them.
Interesting, as we looked at the dental, we're self-funded in our dental, too, and we had quite a large savings there, mostly because I think people couldn't go to the dentist for the last quarter. So kind of helped out. In fact, I think that our experience, even on the medical side, was impacted favorably, but I don't think they're willing to
It's going to catch up.
No, I don't think they're willing to give us credit for that next year, thinking it's going to be the same, so. And then, you know, all of the other benefits that we have along with salaries that are based on salaries, like retirement, social security, those kinds of things, similarly saw some savings. As I mentioned, unemployment was $251,000. As I mentioned, unemployment was two hundred fifty one thousand, over-expended from the adopted budget. Again, we'll see that this next year.
It is one of those areas that we're going to, we're perfect with catch-up.
Right. Equipment, we had some savings. We had set aside quite a pot of money for the future ready grants. We didn't end up expending it all mainly because we knew we had to keep an eye on what was going on for this next year. So, we did have some savings there, unusual in the equipment line. Contractual savings, we had about one point four million in savings. There was about seven hundred thousand savings in our utilities, which our maintenance and operations area took advantage of because of the closure and expended on a fair number of projects there.
So, if the two sixty part of this doesn't, how would you clear? He said the seven hundred.
It's offset by the maintenance.
Right, it was offset.
By operations.
Yeah.
So, we use some to offset the other. We increase our projects and we use those funds.
Right, right. Another area that I thought was significant this year, despite that, you know, we had a slowdown in the fourth quarter, was special education was over-expended by four hundred fifty one thousand in our contractual out-of-district placements and services. So, we have a great program, and people want to come here, and they do. So, we really had quite a large increase in our special education costs this year and student counts.
What would that do to the back end of the year? Or, I'm sorry, people coming into the district immediately?
It's ongoing placement, because especially outside placements, where we place people outside, and those are huge, huge, and those programs continue. Especially have like huge residential placements, things like that.
And that's still happening, even during COVID, that's still happening?
Yeah.
Yes. Textbooks, we had a little bit of savings, but we also know that any savings we have there can go towards hardware and software costs as well that are also able. BOSI's, we had about hundred and sixty five thousand savings from the adjusted budget, but over-expended from the adopted budget. A lot of that was due to IMF, but they were.
The person's technology, it wasn't brain.
Right, right, right. It was all for good, all for good reason. Obviously, we had quite a lot to put together for home instruction, or virtual instruction, I should say. And BOSI's also incurred all of the postage costs for the absentee budget voting as well. So, they kind of got a little double whammy there.
So, the thirty five thousand savings that were called, they had nothing to do with this. So, does postage embed in this, too?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Occupational education, we usually get a good estimate. We had quite a large participation rate above and beyond what we projected for OCHA this year. So, we were hundred and fifty seven thousand over-expended there. We had some savings in instructionally-related BOSI's costs. Again, that was because we were not in person for the last quarter. Supplies, again, savings there mainly because we were not here in the last quarter. There was, we still did our bids for this next year for various supplies and whatnot. So, you know, we still had those expenses going on, but we did manage to create some savings there to carry over for this next year into our fund balance. Transfers to other funds, transferred to special ed, or special aid fund was over by seventy three thousand, but that covers the summer school twenty percent that the district has to cover on those costs. So, we can't really control that a whole lot. Transfer to capital fund was fully expended. That's that seven hundred thousand that we transferred to capital fund in order to, we call them mini projects, but smaller capital projects that don't require like an entire summer to do and that kind of thing. Transfer to debt service, fully expended, as we know. Transfer to school lunch, this one's interesting. Last year, we were required to cover bad debts at the end of the year from the general fund. And of course, this year, we didn't have any school lunch sales per se. We did provide breakfast and lunch, and the free reduced-price lunch reimbursements still came in for those students, but it didn't come close to covering the expenses that we incurred. So, we actually ran a deficit in the food service fund, which we also had to cover from the general fund this year. So, that was about two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. Any questions on the expenditure side? Moving on to the revenue side, we recognized a little over a hundred percent there. Real property taxes, we had about a hundred and twenty three thousand excess. Some of that, I would say the bulk of that probably came from our payment and move taxes that the IDA sets up for us. And we also have some interest and penalties that were underfunded a little bit, so kind of offset there. State aid, seven hundred and twenty nine thousand excess. I listed all the various ones. The big one is BOSI's aid, and we usually do try to fully expend BOSI's aid, or BOSI's expenses, and then some if there's additional money because it is aid.
So, in this case, we receive more aid than we, because we expended more the prior year than the present.
Correct, correct.
Have we just gotten extra around that?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
It's all the timing of when we do certain projects and how things come on. And also, yeah, it's the timing of projects and how we refinance, finance the projects as well, that dictate when the state aid comes in. So, it's a benefit, right? So, if you remember, our debt service is doing this, because we've been timing debt, and we'll get the line debt with state aid coming in, because we don't have a situation of paying more money upfront, and state aid is tied in. So, we try to time it as much as possible, one-to-one, so the state aid's coming in, debt is being expended at the same time. Which is always a tricky part, because the state often throw a little wrinkles in there. Then we have to.
Interest income, finally, we're able to say we far exceeded our budgeted amount by four hundred and sixty seven thousand. Let's keep our fingers crossed we are able to do it again this year. We only budgeted a hundred thousand, so we actually did much better. And getting better at managing interest rates in various places to put our money. Federal revenue, pretty much right on target there. Other revenue, we had a two hundred fifty four thousand shortfall, and the bulk of that actually came from a significant, significantly less foster care students that we were able to bill for for other districts. I have no explanation for that, other than we just didn't have that activity this year. So, dropping down to the fund balance, the district's unappropriated fund balance is below four percent, as we mentioned. I think these numbers might, yeah, unfortunately, I updated it since I did this. Three point nine six percent is where the fund balance landed, about seven point two million. You know, we talked about the fact that we were saving on our expenditures, our revenues exceeded our target, our operational surplus was seven point nine million. Very important as we go into this next year, as they're talking about the twenty percent state aid cuts. What that means, I don't think anybody still knows. All I know is, we just recently got some money for last year that we only got eighty percent of. Wasn't aware they were even going to touch last year. So, you know, it's a moving target constantly. So, kind of as we planned, one point five million, we're re-appropriating for next year's budget. We are adding to some reserves, the workers' comp reserve, based on actuarial estimates, we fully funded that. The tax surcharge reserve, we had the reduction for the reappropriation that we did, but we're also planning to increase that by a million dollars, because I have a pile on my desk, I'm not kidding, it's probably that high, of tax surcharge claims that have come into the district. So, a lot of people are asking for reductions, which is not a complete surprise. Retirement contribution reserve, we're proposing to fund three point two five million there. The reason is because going into next year, if we do have a reduction, that's one reserve where we could reappropriate money to cover our retirement expenses for employees' retirement. And that frees up money then to cover other shortfalls in our budget, so.
So, just want to clarify, it's a point, it's a time reference, stating that Kathy this way, she said going into next year.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Right now. And because, the reason why, because she's doing a year-end analysis of last year. So, the point of reference then is the next year, which is what we in now. But the bigger point I want to make with the board is, when we put the budget together, we increased this reappropriation to one point five million to mitigate the tax impact, what I think Mr. Pressler has referred to as a shock absorber, so to speak. So, with that twenty percent potential looming out there, it could be as low as about five point, I think we had that number here.
Yep.
It could be as, as low as, if they only take twenty percent of foundation aid, not say as low, right, like it's a low number. The low could be five point seven million, but the high could be nine point six million. Either way, those are painful reductions, because let me go back up to this piece of it. Remember, that's why the fund balance capacity becomes important for districts, and I love Mr. Pressler's analogy he used during the budget process, having some kind of absorbers to deal with it, because the reality of it is, if the state decides to reduce us by twenty percent on foundation aid, five point seven million dollars, there's only two ways we mitigate that. Don't spend it, which we were cutting programs, or find revenues from someplace else to infuse to offset that state revenue loss. And so, when we start looking at these reserves, a lot of these, some of these reserves are allocated for stuff, the tax surcharge one Kathy mentioned, that we have tons of people filing for reductions in, in the tax surcharge. I call it the one forty six Route Nine quarter. And so, you see all the places on those kind of lists. And then we have to say, what other flexibility do we have in some of these other reserves? In other words, use some of those and kind of like, okay, cross our fingers, move forward, we have to deal with the situation today. And so, it will be a situation, as a front instance, if we had to somehow backfill five point seven million dollars, all of a sudden, the fund balance that we talk about, that we'd be anticipating, if everything goes, if none of that happens, rather than describing, everything flows, we should end next year about three point three percent fund balance in state law support. If what is being proposed now happens without federal intervention, our fund balance, I'm going to tell you, is going to be below two percent, about one point one something, which is kind of like driving on a desert. You got a hundred miles to go, and your car just showed E. Somebody's walking in the E. And I use that analogy because we never want to be in that situation, that we can't get to the destination because we simply don't have enough capacity to do so. So, that's why when we plan the budget, if you remember all those contingencies we had in place between the revenue side, as well as on the debt service side, which on the expenditure side, I mean, to say, if we can modify some of the debt service expenditure in terms of how we pay things out, back to Mr. DeLalo's question, our plan right now is to pay out debt in line with when state aid is coming. That's the ideal. A survival mode is to not pay out debt as fast, and then you have the misalignment with state aid, and it's, you can't do that for too long before you, because then you create a structural deficit moving forward. It's a survival technique, right, to kind of get you through this period, and you have to recalibrate very quickly afterwards on the expenditure side. So, that's why this conversation, I want to pause here for the board, because people hear, oh my God, the district saved all their money. We're using all that saving to preserve the continuous, so, we're using grace, thank you for being a grace. So, the graces of the world, we won't say to kids, oh, you know, I'm sorry, that next year's going to be a bad year for you. You never want to have that conversation. And that's why we're trying to take all these precautions right now, and crossing the open ground, whatever, that twenty percent reality, be it a five point seven or nine. And, but you have some places that's going to be seeing twenty, thirty, forty. I'm hearing Syracuse, potential hundred and fifty million, Rochester, hundred and seventy seven million, ridiculous amount of money, that if this happened, would devastate, fundamentally devastate the quality of education in the state of New York. And so, people want to argue then, let's not reopen schools. Has nothing to do with reopening the schools. We still got to provide education to kids. The question is, what adjustments do we need to make to effectively do so? Because delaying one thing doesn't delay the problem, or erase the problem. The question is, how do we recalibrate, use resources? And I'm sharing this back to the world, because this is a conversation we had in February, March, April, May, with those scenarios, and we hope that we have enough to bridge the gap, depends on what that gap is, so then we can start hopefully two, three years out, and kind of get back into that regeneration mode versus that survive kind of mode to preserve programs. So, this is an important piece for the board to build. And we hope that this time next year, when we do a year-end, we're not sitting here saying, oh my God, that came true. That we sit here saying, you know what? People at the federal level were smart enough to, if the declaration that education and teachers are essential is true, not a political statement, support it. Because absent that, places like Shen, for the most part, will still provide a at par quality of education to kids, but many kids in this state will suffer immensely, and you can't pay for that recovery. And that's the thing about it, right? It's not something, oh yeah, we have a pause one year, then we give it back to you next year from the kid experience. It doesn't, there's no redo or do-over in those experiences. So, there's a very real conversation that we are having right now as we plan capacity, and even today, we're adding some staff to address our capacity needs. It's almost like, why are we doing that? Because it's not, it's not how much we spent, it's what we spend it on. We spend on those things that's going to add capacity for us to provide education for kids, and try to squeeze other areas as we move forward. So, those are big conversations. So, when we look at year-end, you know, other side of this coin, you come out of those projects, and you kind of went through them kind of fast. All those projects were done at opportune times to take advantage of time and the resources. So, in a tight budget sequence, one, two years out, we did it, and now we're reaping the benefits of it. PPE stuff, kudos to Bob Stalica, for example. Before people started buying stuff involved, we kind of like this one, you know what? I come from a very simple place. I'd rather have it and don't need it, than need it and don't have it. But I'm not a whore. I'm a very conservative person, in a sense of, I would have something that I think I'm going to need, then need it and say, ah, ah, I'm going to wait, take a chance. If I need it, I'm going to plan for it. And we needed certain things to plan for safely opening the schools, and so we try to anticipate as much of those things as we can, and try to have those things in place moving forward. So, again, that's a backdrop, I think it's important for you as a board to know, because, you know, just looking at the numbers, it doesn't tell you anything, right? It's the context that becomes important. So, you can walk out of here saying that, you know, one, fiscally, we're in the best place we can be right now. Hopefully, we're positioned well enough to deal with any fiscal adversities. And if the fiscal adversities happen, hopefully comparatively, we're positioned well enough. What is the absolute comparison, right? What can we do comparatively, or how does it look in comparison to everyone else? And so, we don't want to do that piece, or get us out of the statement, we're better off than you. But the reality of it is, we're trying to make sure we're positioned to do those kind of things. That's why we make these things, articles, and make those decisions, and talk about reserves and all those things, to make sure that when the rainy day gets, we're not sitting there with a big cold night roof and saying, man, I wish we saved money to fix that now, because I should burn all the furniture as well.
Thank you for that. And you're absolutely right. I mean, in order to save, you have to be a smart spender. So, that's clear here. So, I just want to summarize, just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, when you talk about the five point six million, that's really twenty percent of foundation aid. The nine point six represents foundation aid plus all the other ratings that are coming in, if they're cut by twenty percent. So, and in this, we have about six point one million to absorb that. And if it's above it, then can we move from those other reserves?
Certain reserves are not. Certain, certain reserves are, and that's the point, so.
It's just the one and a half million, that's the only reserve we can prove.
Certain reserves are limited that we can reappropriate, so then we have to, they're going to expenditure stop.
Okay.
So that's where it gets even dicier. And, and again, those, what you just described is truly a dire worst-case scenario, right? Because that's the, the spending, ex, um, 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 depleting everything for one shot and not having no idea what the next year's sequence is going to be, which we would never do, by the way. Because we, we have to figure out some way to always try to control our destiny to some degree and not having a total reliance on what's the next political cycle may or may not bring, or what's the next economic cycle may not, may or may not bring to us.
Do you mind me asking, what, what, what was the one that was already submitted to the district, about 80% and 70%?
So here, it's on here too. So, so, so this, by the way, is based upon last year, 2019, 20. That's why Catherine said, we were surprised. We were surprised that aid that was based upon last year's expenditure that, so, so aid from prior years also tricked into the summer. State doesn't take everything in the, in the, in, so, so we were surprised that they impacted. They don't call it, they just say they're holding it right now.
Oh.
So, 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 okay, whatever that is, you know. Okay, we, we can hold it, for instance, they've promised not to spend it. Um, they're just holding promise not to spend it. So that's the first surprise we had. The big question, and this is where advocacy comes in right here, is that if they're looking at, what does, what does the, the 20% mean? The 20% of what? So all of these, transportation, BOCs, politics, this, cost profits, this, but, all of these are expenditure-driven aids. In other words, we are expended with a commitment that you said you're going to reimburse you a certain rate back. And so, so, and again, it's not a complaint, because everyone is in the fiscal crisis that they're dealing with. The piece is that we need to have some, what is that definition of piece actually mean? Because it's two different plans. Planning for 5.7 is huge, planning for 9.6 is, quite frankly, a, a tall order to, to carry. Uh, and that's just here at Shen, because we don't have a huge reliance on, on state aid. When you look at schools, so that's the opposite, right? Not to prolong the time, Mrs. Stevenson, we've gone too long.
What?
So when you look at, I know you're going to give a couple, so, so when you look at Shen, so Shen is about 70% property tax and about 30% all other revenues, with the bulk of that being state aid. Yeah, I'm not going to call any particular school district, but you have some school district not before here that's the complete opposite. They have 70-plus percent state aid and 30% of other districts. So when you think about, just do the math, for example, so, so just make it easy. If, 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 if we got 10 million dollars in state aid, and they got 100 million dollars in state aid, and 20% of our 10 is, is due to math, I think what's that name? Is, is 2 million dollars, right? She's a common person, so that's 2 million, 20% means 2 million dollars for us. 20% for them is 20 million dollars. And so all of a sudden, they are trying to figure out how to be backfill 20 million dollars. And we talk about two very comparable sized districts, but because our financial structure is different, uh, actually mirror image, parallel, the implications are significantly different. Because if they had the capacity to get more property taxes, they wouldn't have such a huge reliance on state aid. And so that becomes, so not only is it 20% of foundation versus this, but will there be differentiation of the impact on schools and communities? And that's why I use the example that, 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 that when we are sneezing, other places are just flat out on their back set, in the same situation. And it's important for us to talk about that, because, you know, sometimes we get people demanding, what? Guess what? There's a harsh reality that we're all trying to contend with all the time right now in the COVID situation. And we're fortunate. We're fortunate that, that we're talking about being able to provide a full-fledged CBL opportunities for kids. We're fortunate talking about at the secondary level, trying to provide the graces of the world a full schedule complement of courses. Some places is kind of like, hey, we just want to provide a basic core. Have kids come to school for a couple hours a day, and that's all we can do. And if that's all you can do, that's better than nothing, right? But that's not optional or even ideal in our world. And so I share that, and not that people have sympathy about what we're trying to do, but people have appreciation of all these factors that's playing. So, so we have some conversation about, why don't you do this? All these things kind of end up playing, and we're simply trying to make sure that we continue to focus on our North Star, which is have our schools ready, provide a quality education for our kids. And that's where the fiscal piece comes into play all the time. So, thanks, Mrs. Stevenson.
And, and the last piece, and I, I won't necessarily, it's important, but I won't necessarily go into it too much, because the board has seen this. Uh, we have, we have, we didn't make a lot of changes. Um, we spoke through the goals document, um, just want to increase this. So, so this statement up here includes the diverse, ex-amount, the same statement that drove our budget process, if you recall. Just, just burr it out. So our goal statements haven't changed, but I just want to highlight a couple of things that, that's particularly important to the board, that when we start looking at our essential objectives, a lot of that is, is focusing on all the things that we need to do in, in what schools would look like moving forward. Looking at, at, um, um, looking at, looking at, um, 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 things such as, as remote and virtual course options and maximizing those things, the things that we're doing right now, essential objectives. Looking at the student classroom experience in terms of how we provide prioritizing equity. A big conversation point that I know is of high interest for the board, how, what are those things that we're doing within our classroom experiences for kids? Um, going to give shout-out to, to Grace and the Student Senate kids, who are now engaging in the conversation and want to, to talk about this school and experience for them. And so that's a goal area for us. Um, how we measure student learning and, and focus on a more of a content mastery approach versus some of the traditional approaches that we have. All the things that we do now, looking at learning standards and grading standards and grading practices as a part of the reimagining as we move forward with the next generation. So those things haven't changed for an instructional piece of it. The organizational culture piece, anti-bias and racism, conversation we've had here. Um, that's, that's one of those pieces that, and that's top of our organizational environmental piece. How, how can we as a school system in this day and age, don't see that as a priority focus? It doesn't matter, to be quite frank with you, that we're a majority white school district. We live in a world of people. And so, so I say that because oftentimes people think this is a black thing versus a white thing. This is everyone thing. And, and so how do we embrace that as a reality as a school system? So that's one of our essential objectives, everything from, from, from professional development, all the things that we need to do to build a capacity of people to effectively engage in, in actions to move the needle progress. Social-emotion learning, it's going to be a huge piece. When, when, when adults and kids transition back and acclimate to a, a COVID environment, learning the COVID world, huge acclimation, social emotion. Kids haven't been in, in school spaces since March. And they're coming back into a school space, and it may look the same, but it's going to feel different. So how psychologically we get kids to, to reactivate, or staff to reactivate, or parents, for that matter, to reactivate, um, and those kind of things. So social-emotion learning, a big part of it, and safety is a continued part of it. And we spoke about all those things, the prevention, the mitigation, the reinforcement. All those things are part of our organizational culture piece moving forward. Personnel professionalism, that goal statement hasn't changed. But certainly, professional development, instructional delivery is a big part of our focus. The four days that we spoke about, start of the school year. PD focus, it's all about delivery. How do we teach, um, provide supports for teaching in a, in a hybrid model, for example, as those things. So the point I'm making with all these things, that, that these things are, these, these statements are not unrelated to what we're doing, and what we're doing is necessarily not driving those statements. These things coincide with each other as we build a system in a very forward, future, present perspective. What do we want schools to look like in three to five years? And what are we doing right now to get us to that point in three to five years? That's how we always had developed our goals from a future, present perspective. Uh, diverse inclusive hiring practice, we're going to continue on, on that focus that we've been focusing on for a long time. Uh, progressive learning communities, recognizing that, that the strength of our organization is the strength of the people within the organization. So how do we foster that and provide those opportunities for people to learn together? Not, and it's not instructional conversation, it's everyone. So, so continued investment in all our staff to hone their skills, um, as, as we move forward. Um, fiscal responsibility, Mrs. Chase has talked about those kind of things. Um, school reopening capacity is our biggest priority. It was our priority when we were developing the budget, because we, all the things we just spoke about. So we're just going to say ditto to the last 10 minutes of conversation that falls under the school, um, capacity piece. Equitable resource allocation, making sure that, that as we look at staffing capacity, we don't have a situation that, that one school has better capacity than the next school to provide services to kids. And so, so that's something we're, we're keenly focused on and trying to, to have equitable. But equitable doesn't mean equal, by the way. Some places need more, and some places need less. And so in order to accommodate the respective needs. Um, and then strategic budgeting is, is a huge one, and I think has taken on a greater emphasis. Um, in the last, we've always been a, a two, three-year forward perspective in budget. But this is now, is, this is beyond that piece. This is where we talk about all the things we talked about before. Anticipate the worst-case scenario that we can even think of and put that into a real situation and say, how much of that can we effectively address? And where's the gap? And how much of the gap we can live with? And if we can't live with it, what else are the critical decisions we need to make? And how do we live that critical decision? So strategic budgeting is going to be a big part of, part of it. So all the year-end savings you heard Catherine just talk about, all that is going to influence what we do in the current year. What we do this year, we are already forecasting out in 21, 22, 22, 23, and saying, if all the things we can control, if we could do those things, here's what we could potentially see in the next two to three years, recognizing that some of these other huge factors are still looming on the horizon. So strategic budgeting becomes a big part of it. So the point I'm making to the board is that, that, that we, we were very thoughtful when we developed the essential objectives. And, and I think you said, you know, to, to, to save, you have to spend smart. I think that was your comment to the effect that you just said. Uh, it's the same kind of thing. When you plan well and prepare well, you can predict your outcomes. And so that's what we've been trying to do with our goals document, is plan and prepare well so we can predict what our outcomes are as a system. And we want the outcomes of a system is a quality experience for our kids. And so, so, so the goals we're asking the board, the goal statements are very similar. The essential objectives are driving a lot of the work we're doing right now.
Um, so, thank you for that. Um, I, I very, very much appreciate providing us more background, because these are overriding goals, they're, they're not, um, it's, it's not the plan. Um, and, and some of them actually, it, it's hard to tell whether they're happening now or whether they're going to happen. And it sounds like, for the most part, it's all happening. The, the other thing, and I just want to, I'm stating this just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, when we talk about inclusivity, we're talking really about all of our children. But, um, we're, 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 we're also talking about in this plan to address those that have been underserved and those who are not benefiting from privilege, for example. It, um, um, like, uh, BIPOC and LGBTQ and others, I mean, it's. It, it, this, this plan is talking to those groups. So it's, so it's, it's inclusive of all, but it's also very specific to, um, to those who have been underserved. And I'm just making sure we're on the same page, why are we stating that? Um, so the, the other piece of it that I wanted to also seek clarity is on the social-emotional piece. Because when you go up, um, in that first statement, it, it, we can talk about it in the statement, but it's not necessarily talked about in the essential, um, objectives.
Which one, social emotion?
Yeah.
That's right here, number two.
Um, so, so here it's a parroted social, well, it's, um, the wellbeing, building communities in virtual and physical environments, and talking about, um, the, uh, the, the social-emotional need as far as, like you said, those who are returning, um, that haven't been to school since March. And, um, our students with disabilities, uh, that their role has been turned on its head. Making sure that all are their, their social-emotional needs are just, I guess that, that's where the rest of it's going forward, is, um.
So it's, it's, so I think it's a term interpretation difference. So, so within, within this notion of building communities, and back to your first statement about being in, all-inclusive and recognizing, so it's not only building it in a physical space, but also doing the same thing for kids who are still in the virtual space.
Absolutely.
And so, 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 so that, that, that becomes an added dimension, right? So, so how do we, and the notion of community is, is a notion of, of people feeling valued, appreciated, and, and their needs are being addressed and recognized and acknowledged. So that's what communities do. And so, 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 so that, that word, those terms are, are used to reflect the, the, the all-inclusive nature of, of what people need before, um, um, before they can even start to execute what I call the technical things. Um, so, so people on psychological, if kids aren't psychologically available to learn, doesn't matter, you got the best plans in the world, they're not going to take advantage of it. You know, and so, so how do we make sure that it's a balanced piece of it, right? And it's the same thing, so it's not a, it's not a, a add-on, it's a part of the whole experience. You know, so it's, it's a good teacher, good teacher, he or she is going to make sure that, that classroom is one that kids want to be a part of, they feel as, that, that things are designed with their best interests in mind. Instruction is, is being provided, recognizing their various needs. And that's, that's all a part of the, the sm- social emotional pieces that, that people experience that lends to how they execute and subsequent outcomes that they realize from that experience. So, so I think it's an important part, because sometimes people see these things, they want to see them as separate initiative. If it's separate initiative, it's too easy for things to fall off the table. It's, it's the integration of everything.
Right, I think it's so important, yeah, what you did, so, thank you.
So again, um, the board will be asked, because we just want to form it every year, do it. Um, and we go, and it's important, because I think it's a great process for us to be on the same page and have these conversations, and for the public have a great appreciation of it as well, versus you have places who, who'll pass five-year goals and they never look back at them again until year six. Eh, it's an easy process, but I'm not sure it's an effective process.
Right, and that was the other reason I was bringing this up, is because when we go back and evaluate, if, if they're too vague, too broad, then it's going to be hard to do that.
Thank you. So, Mrs. Davidson, that's it for my two minutes I said I was going to take.
It's all good. I want to take this off a little bit, so I've had it. So, for our action items, um, so, just talking about the approval, um, that we need to do tonight. So for the 20, 21 district goals, can I have a motion to approve? Bob is first, Naomi is second, all, all in fa- uh, yeah, all in favor? Um, a motion passes. I have a comment, but I'll, I'll slide in after. Um, secondly, approval of revised 2021 tax levy.
Actually, that, that's, that's, we, we took that off the, the final version of it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you had the version.
I'm not looking at the old, I'm looking at the old.
You had the version I shared with you on Thursday. You went back and looked at the calculation, and it's, the differences were so minor that the adjustments, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Christina, can I just borrow that? I just want to make sure. I'm sorry. I'll give it right back to you. Okay. Um, all right, so going with contracted services, all language, all languages translation, can I get a motion? Gus is first, Bob is second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next, contract, school psychology trainee support program, SUNY Research Foundation, can I get a motion? Gary's first, Bob is second, any comments?
I do have a comment, it's actually more of a question. So for this one, um, it's, you know, two, two, three SUNY students that are, um, going to be essentially providing services for testing and, um, um, evaluating IP's and the, and the like. My, my, the, the, my question is, um, the way this is written, it, it, the, the contract is, as if we're not in a COVID world, we're not in a pandemic. So, um, I didn't know if there was plans to add an addendum for this one that addresses that. Um, because there's nothing, there's nothing protecting them, um, as far as expectations in, in this, this new world that, that they're going to be operating in.
So, so their functionalities doesn't necessarily change? How, 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 what we expect them to do doesn't change, how they may do it may change. So, 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 so this is, we've had interns now for a number of years. Now, so that's not the first time that this, and so, so we still have some of those similar expectations in terms of what they're, they're doing, and they provide some, quite frankly, this time, some additional capacity that will help us particularly as we start talking about how do we then look at some of the, 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 the added need between living in both worlds, a virtual space and in-person space. So those expectation, expectations don't change. We just have to figure out then, with the COVID situation, what limitations to put in terms of how they deliver or support the things that we need them to support. And so, 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 so those are the specifics that will roll out once we come on site. with whoever they're working with.
And so, and so the way we're speaking of this is, you know, the students coming in, they, they, they may decide, I don't, I don't feel comfortable in that.
So, so they're not coming?
They don't.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be that blunt, but yes.
Okay. That, that, that was the, that part of that I was sort of struggling with with this one. Okay.
Yeah, and they're, they're, and they're, we have some great psychs here and, and they've worked very well and has been tremendous benefit for us. Um, quite, and it's also a potential feeding pipeline for great psychs to come into our system at some, some point as well, but it's tremendous. One, so first piece is provide future psychs a great experience. Secondly, as they get their great experience, they contribute add value to our organization. Third, they also then have, we have a potential of knowing that we have some great folks that we could tap in if we ever have a need. Um, so it's, it's, it's truly a, a supportive relationship. And that's the reason why we entered in this, and that's the reason why we're also willing to, to compensate some piece, because we want to get some quality folks and we want to provide them a quality experience.
When you said, um, the need, are you talking about the role of the social worker specifically?
No, it's school, the school psychology.
The school psychologists and doing their evaluation.
Yeah, and working with special related things, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor? Motion passes. And then, uh, reserve transfers. Can I get a motion? Christina is first, Naomi is second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Now, Mrs. Bush.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Naomi, they also will go through the same process of like self-certifying if they are on campus and the same thing that we do with employees.
Oh, okay.
As far as that piece of it. Um, just a few things for personnel tonight, um, and thank you. We had the late arrivals today, we're still hiring, which is wonderful. Um, but I'd like to recognize, and I don't think she's here tonight, Dr. Michelle Mettler is the recommendation for academic administrator for ELA Social Studies and AIS K five. She's an experienced educator with a literacy background. She has been a director of literacy and adjunct professor at St. Rose. And she, um, was able to attend our leadership academies, so, which was last week, which was terrific. Um, so we look forward to recommending having her on board. We have a few retirements on this agenda. Rita Armstrong, twenty years as classroom aide is retiring at the end of August. William Miller, thirty-six years as a cleaner is retiring at the end of August. And Justina Vedder, twenty-four years as a bus driver, also retiring at the end of August.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jill? Can I get a motion? Dustin's first, Bob is second. No comments, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Jill. Um, before we adjourn, I just want to make one last comment. We heard a lot tonight. Um, we, we've been, we've been continuing this, uh, financial discussion since really March, um, on and off. And again, what Dr. Robinson had said to me in, in a reference in a, in another venue at some point, we are a partner in progress. And we are a partner in progress.